This meeting is now called to order. I'd like to welcome everyone this morning. And just a reminder, it's hard for me sometimes to see if your hand is up if you want to ask a question, so please just speak up if I don't see your hand. Thank you. We'll start with adoption of the minutes.
Be it resolved? Be it resolved?
Did you have a question? Sorry.
No, I was ready to move it.
Okay, sorry, Dave.
Be it resolved that the minutes of the meetings held on December 7th and 9th, 2021, be adopted?
So moved by Counselor Manell and seconded by Counselor Martin. And we'll call the vote.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell. Counselor Jones? Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Menel?
Yes.
Counselor Jaguerre?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
And Madam Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? Seeing none. There are no petitions, presentations, or delegations today. So we'll move into the Committee of the Whole.
Be it resolved that we do now move into Committee of the Whole?
Someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Ketchba and Counselor Purcell. Any questions or comments? Seeing none.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Martin? Counselor Martin? Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Menel?
Yes.
Counselor Jaguerre?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Madam Warden?
Yes.
Circling back to Counselor Martin. Eight one, the motion is carried.
Okay, we'll start with reports of council outside boards and staff. The first item up is Warden's Activity Report.
Just so you know, I did answer yes. I guess you didn't hear it.
Okay. It's okay. I'll just move forward.
Thank you, Counselor Martin.
Be it resolved that the report titled Warden's Activity Report and COVID-19 Update dated January 4th, 2021 from Warden French be received and filed?
Okay, someone to move and someone to second.
Jones.
Deputy Warden Marks and Counselor Jones. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Count, Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Menel?
Yes.
Counselor Jaguerre?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Madam Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
The next item up is the Annual Council Committee Update for SCORE, Warden French and Warden Marks.
Be it resolved that the report titled Annual Council Committee Update, South Central Ontario Region, dated November 21st, 2021, from Warden French and 2021 Warden Marks be received and filed, and that continued investment of $25,000 for membership in South Central Ontario Regional Region Economic Development Corporation, SCORE, be considered as part of the 2022 budget deliberations?
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Deputy Warden Marks and Counselor Ketchba. Are there any questions or comments concerning this report? Seeing none. Sorry, go ahead, Counselor Menel.
The Short Line Railway, the financing on that, are they looking at the municipalities and the county to help fund that?
We would be pleased to bring back a follow-up report. I'm hesitant to comment on that at this point.
Okay, thanks, Julie.
Are there any further questions or comments? Seeing none.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Ca, Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Menel?
No.
Counselor Jaguerre?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Warden French?
Yes.
Eight one, the motion is carried.
The next item up is 2022 Community Grant Program allocations. Counselor Ketchba.
Be it resolved that the report titled 2022 Community Grant Program allocations dated January 5th, 2022, from Counselor Ketchba, Chair of the Rural Initiatives and Planning Advisory Committee, be received and filed, and that council approve the 2022 Community Grant Program allocations as referenced in Table 1-1, 2022 Community Grant Program allocations, and that the 2022 Community Grant Program allocations be considered as part of the 2022 Elgin County budget process.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Jaguerre and Counselor Ketchba. Are there any questions or comments concerning this report? Seeing none.
Counselor McPhail?
Sorry, did you have a question? Counselor Manell?
Yes, I did.
Go ahead.
I'm a little disappointed in the process. I see that because of the, there was more asked than there was ability to meet those asks, everybody's been reduced significantly. And I look at, you know, the poor things like the Ploughman's Association that wanted 200, and now they're down to, I don't know, 120, whatever it was. And the 4H asked for 2,000, now they're down to 1,200. Another year, they're just going to say, well, if they're not going to meet our ask, we'll just double our ask, and then we're going to get what we really want. So I, I wonder about the process and how we can improve that.
Julie, did you want to respond?
Or, Professor Chairman.
Okay, Counselor Ketchba, do you have an answer for Counselor Manell?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much, Madam Warden. Through you to Counselor Menel. I think the committee is always welcome or always open to comments and areas on how to improve it. The committee had decided to stick to the process of allocation through formula, which seemed to be the fairest approach going forward. We realize that certain asks are a lot smaller, and you could simply usurp the process and grant the full amount. But then again, it injects a certain amount of inequity into the process itself. So you're absolutely correct. In the future, some group may simply ask for than they require, but that would then be incumbent upon the committee to weed that out through their mission of their financials, as well as other materials that they do forward. Again, we're open to any kind of process that may provide more clarity or more fairness into the system, but I'm not aware of anything at this point. And I think Counselors Jaguerre and Counselor Martin have things to add as well, Madam Warden.
Okay, I did see Counselor Martin's hand up. Go ahead, Counselor Martin.
Yeah, my, my, I expressed the exact same concerns that Counselor Menel expressed, because last year we did usurp the formula, and we gave the Ploughman's their 250, we gave the 4H their 200, and we gave the Seniors in the Park event 200, or, sorry, 2,000 and 2,000 to the 4H. I still believe that those small asks like that should be considered differently from the large asks, and I'd like to take time in that committee to reevaluate this and look at, say, any ask under 5,000 is evaluated differently than asks that are above 5,000, just, or even at 2,000 or whatever. But I, I think that it really penalizes those who ask for very little.
I agree with you, Sally.
Thank you, Counselor Martin. Counselor Jaguerre, did you have any comments? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I just want to add to what's already been said, that we have been refining the process for that very reason, to find as much objectivity. And I would like to point out that one of the reasons the, some of the grants are lower, it's affected by their score. And their score, it's not just affected by, you know, the size of the pie. And their score is a direct reflection of their application and how much information they provide. And so we're trying to encourage applicants to give us more information, and sometimes the, the budget information was missing entirely. So it is the, I believe the formula, it's been refined and tweaked, and the committee has been, and staff have been working really hard to find what is the fairest way of dealing with this. And there is a way for each applicant to improve their score, which is how they can control how much they get. I, and I've expressed this at the committee meeting, but I do not have a concern about any of the applicants sort of trying to play the system and apply for more. A, we have relationships with these applicants, and it would be, it would be very visible to the committee as, as we review the grant. So I think that argument, you know, does not need to be necessarily considered. But otherwise, like I said, I, I too am always open for feedback, but this has been almost three years of tweaking and to find the fairest way. And those who did not receive the full amount can approach the committee for feedback and ways they can improve their score. It's the score that is the key.
Deputy Warden Marks?
I've been known to say that I'm not in favor of grants, that we spend more time giving more money, giving it away than what we give away. However, I can't offer anything better than what the committee has come up with, so I certainly support what the committee's done.
Are there any further questions? Counselor McPhail?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I, I think we have to commend this committee on, on the work that they've done. It's county council that has dictated how much money they have at the beginning of, beginning of the process, and, and, you know, it's very, very difficult them to, I call it, trying to put 10 pounds of potatoes in a five-pound sack. There's only so much money to go around, and I think they try to allocate it out on a fair and equitable basis. So again, as has been before, if some politician, I guess it's county council prerogative if they want to put more money in the pot so we can satisfy people to their wants and needs. That's another option that we've got, but I think under the current economic situation, probably the committee has done good work for us all the way around.
Are there any further questions or comments? I will make one comment. This was my first opportunity to really look at the way that the committee has been doing their process. And I have to say that I think it's a great process, because how much effort the organization puts into their application, it also shows how much grant money they're going to receive. And I can agree with Counselor Jaguerre that some of the applicants put very little time or effort into their applications, so it's all scored. So I firmly believe that we were very fair when we looked at all the applications and all the work that was put into those applications. So I'm good with the process. And if there aren't any... Oh, did you have a further comment, Counselor Martin?
Yes, just one more. And that, no matter how much they improve their application, they might get a little more. They're never going to get their full amount in this system because of the fact that we, there was always a higher ask than there is money to give out. And that's why I really do believe we should be seriously looking at the low asks in a different way than the high asks, or scoring them differently. Because I, I believe in things like 4H and the Ploughman's, and even the Seniors in the Pic, Park, sorry, Seniors Picnic in the Park, to me, are very important services that we provide. And it, it does bother me greatly that those people are penalized because they ask for so little.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Martin. Are there any further questions or comments? Okay.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Menel?
Yes.
Counselor Jaguerre?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Thank you. And Madam Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Next item up is in regard to the homes.
Be it resolved that the report titled Homes Infection Control Policy 2.10 Immunization Staff COVID-19 and 2.23 Pandemic Prevention and Control Staff Testing and Administration Policy 1.35 Visitor and Resident Absences During a Pandemic Dated January 4th, 2022 be received and filed, and that council approve the adoption of the Homes Infection Control Policy 2.10 Immunization Staff COVID-19 and 2.23 Pandemic Prevention and Control Staff Testing and Administration Policy 1.35 Visitor and Resident Absences During Pandemic Policy Changes.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second.
Move.
Counselor Menel, seconded by Counselor Jones. And I'll turn this over to you, Michelle. Good morning.
Thank you, Madam Warden. So the Ministry of Long-Term Care has issued updated directives and policy regarding long-term care home immunization requirements, rapid testing, and visitor and absences in both November and December of '21. I've highlighted the changes in the report, but mostly related to third dose vaccination requirements for staff, students, support workers, volunteers, and visitors, and the fourth dose option for our long-term care home residents. A clause on absences for social and overnight absences, and a pause on general visitors at this time, as well as testing requirements. The mandated and legislative pandemic measure changes are being implemented as we speak within the required timelines across the Elgin County homes, and the policy updates do align with the ministry directives and guidance documents. So we continue to operationalize and update, update, update with each of the changes that keep coming our way. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Are there any questions for Michelle? Okay, seeing none.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Menel?
Yes.
Counselor Jaguerre?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Madam Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
The next items in regard to the Elgin County Library Policy Revision.
Be it resolved that the report titled Elgin County Library Policy Revision Displays Bulletin Boards and Petitions from the Director of Community and Cultural Services, dated January 5th, 2022, be received and filed, and that the policy displays bulletin boards and petitions as presented in the report as Appendix A be hereby adopted.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Purcell and Counselor Martin. And I'll turn it over to you, Brian. Good morning.
Yeah, good morning. Thank you, Madam Warden, and through you to council, and happy new year. This report recommends an update to library's policy on displays bulletin boards and petitions as part of our ongoing review of library policies. I've noted the updates in the report, and I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Are there any questions for Brian? Okay, seeing none.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Menel?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Jaguerre?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Madam Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
The next item up is HR-related. I'll turn that over to you for the resolution.
Be it resolved that Human Resources Policies 8.26 Substance Abuse and 3.30 Employment of Relatives be approved as drafted by county council, and that the report titled HR Policies 8.26 Substance Use and 3.30 Employment of Relatives, dated January 11th, 2022, from the Director of Human Resources, be received and filed.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second.
Move.
Counselor Jones and seconded by Counselor McPhail. Good morning, Amy. I'll turn it over to you, please.
Good morning, Madam Warden and members of council. So Human Resources staff have drafted two policies for council's review, feedback, and adoption today. These policies have been reviewed by county legal and management team members to ensure they meet legislative requirements and are applicable and feasible for all service areas. HR Policy 8.26 is related to substance use and workplace impairment, and will provide a tool for management to rely upon if related issues arise in the workplace, and to ensure there's no confusion related to the legalization of cannabis. And the other policy, HR Policy 3.3, relates to the employment of relatives and is an amendment to an existing policy, which is currently very brief. The current draft provides greater depth and definition to provide more clarity as such questions may arise during recruitment processes. I welcome any feedback from county council, and will incorporate any directed changes into the policies before they are shared with all staff.
Thank you, Amy. Are there any questions for Amy? Seeing none.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Menel?
Yes.
Counselor Jaguerre?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Madam Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
The next item up is 2022 Non-Union Economic Increase Recommendation.
Be it resolved that county council approve a non-union economic adjustment of 2% effective the first full pay period of 2022, and that the necessary bylaw be prepared.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Menel and seconded by Counselor Jaguerre. And I'll turn this back over to you, Amy, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Human Resources staff have gathered the common comparator data, which we do annually before recommending a non-union economic adjustment to county council. The county's process has always looked to balance our recommendation against the CPI, Cost of Living Statistics, other Ontario municipalities and counties, and our local Elgin municipal partners, as well as our internal bargaining partners, including ONA, SEIU, and QP. Last year, the county's increase was slightly higher than market trends and placed more weight on our internal bargaining partners. This year, the county's increase is slightly lower than market trends, and again, we've placed greater weight on what our internal bargaining partners will be receiving this year, and taking into consideration the current budgetary process. We currently have the Market Salary Review underway, which will identify further if the county's annual adjustment process is appropriate, or if our process requires a review or a modified approach moving forward. Per the policy, the approved increase will be applied to the first full pay period of 2022 for both non-union county staff and county council. The Finance Department typically includes a placeholder in the annual budget for non-union cost of living increases, and 2% was included in the 2022 budget for planning purposes. All considered, we are recommending that county council consider approving a 2% non-union economic increase for 2022, and I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you, Amy. Are there any questions for Amy?
I have a comment, Madam.
Go ahead, Counselor Martin.
I have a concern with just automatically raising. Normally, I would say, yes, this is fine. I'm just concerned in this year of COVID, when so many businesses are going bankrupt, and so many people have lost their jobs or been laid off with no pay, it really does concern me that our staff, who are fairly well-paid, I would say, are still going to get a raise, and we, as county council, are going to get a raise when so many people are suffering. So I really think it's an inappropriate time to be raising salaries.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Martin. Are there any further questions or comments? Counselor Menel?
Just in response to Sally, the, the union staff is getting the 2% or 2% raise, so we've always tried to keep the union and the non-union going hand in glove, so I think I would be willing to support this.
Are there any further questions or comments? Seeing none.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
No.
Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Menel?
Yes.
Counselor Jaguerre?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Madam Warden?
Yes.
Eight one, the motion is carried.
Official Plan Review Discussion Paper Number Four.
Be it resolved that the report titled Official Plan Review Discussion Paper Number Four Housing and Affordability from the General Manager of Engineering Planning and Enterprise, dated December 7th, 2021, be received and filed.
Someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Ketchba and Counselor Jones. And I'll turn it over to you, Brian. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Warden, and through you to council. Happy new year. Based on feedback from the Rural Initiatives Planning Advisory Committee, this information report presents Discussion Paper Number Four, which deals with housing and affordability, and details a series of provincial and neighboring municipal policies that may be considered as part of the county's official plan five-year review exercise. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Are there any questions for Brian? Seeing none.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counsel, Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Menel?
Yes.
Counselor Jaguerre?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
And Madam Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
The next item is Approval for Official Plan Amendment Number 27.
Be it resolved that the Council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin approve Official Plan Amendment Number 27, the Municipality of BAM Official Plan, File Number BA OPA 27-21, and that staff be directed to provide notice of this decision in accordance with the Planning Act. And it be noted that upon adoption of the county's official plan review and associated amendments, the Municipality of BAM initiative initiate, initiate an official plan amendment to ensure conformity with the Elgin County official plan.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Purcell and seconded by Deputy Warden Marks. And I'll turn this over to you, Brian.
Thank you, Madam Warden, through you to council. Whereas previous OPA 26 previously required the developer to enter into an agreement with the municipality as to the design and cost apportionment of any required future public waterworks, it was determined that legally such requirement was not feasible. Accordingly, OPA 27-21 amends such requirement to now only require the developer to provide detailed servicing plans for future municipal water services as part of any draft plan of subdivision or condominium application. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Are there any questions or comments on this report? Seeing none.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Menel?
Yes.
Counselor Jaguerre?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Madam Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
The next item up is Tender Award.
Be it resolved that the report titled Tender Award Contract T21-279 Clacklin Road Bridge Rehabilitation, dated December 7th, 2021, from the General Manager of Engineering Planning and Enterprise, be received and filed.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. A move by Counselor McPhail and seconded by Counselor Jones. And I'll turn this back over to you, Brian.
Thank you, Madam Warden, through you to council. Now, the information report details recent tender results and Elwood County's proportionate funding share associated with the upcoming rehabilitation of the Clacklin Road Bridge anticipated to start in March. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Are there any questions for Brian? Okay, seeing none.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Mennel?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Madam Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Next item up is Imperial Road Roadside Safety Review, Port Bruce.
Be it resolved that the report titled Imperial Road Roadside Safety Review, Port Bruce, dated December 21, 2021, from the General Manager, Engineering Planning and Enterprise, be received and filed.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Mennel and seconded by Counselor Ketchba. And Brian, did you want to speak to this?
Yes, through you, Madam Warden, to council. Upon receipt of requests from the township of Melohead to consider the installation of guide rail on Imperial Road within the village of Port Bruce, staff reviewed this location in context of applicable technical manuals and have determined that a guide rail is not warranted. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Are there any questions for Brian concerning this report? Counselor Mennel, go ahead.
Just a comment and certainly thank you, Brian, for looking into this. This request came down from Port Bruce rate payers, and I'm satisfied that it does not meet the criteria for guide rail, so thank you for doing that.
Okay, are there any further questions or comments? Seeing none.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Mennel?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
And Madam Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
The next items in regard to Terrace Lodge Redevelopment Steering Committee.
Whereas the Terrace Lodge Redevelopment Steering Committee met on January 4, 2022 to review project changes and directed staff to provide county council with a summary of project changes and new expenditures for review and approval, now therefore be it resolved that the report titled Terrace Lodge Redevelopment Steering Committee, January Update, dated January 4, 2022, from the General Manager of Engineering Planning and Enterprise and Chief Administrative Officer be received and filed, and that council approve an increase in the Terrace Lodge Redevelopment Projects Project Management Scope of Work previously awarded to D. Grant Construction Limited in the amount of $415,000 for the installation of communications and security infrastructure, and that council consent to including $51,506 in the Terrace Lodge Project Management Budget for interior design services related to furniture, fixtures, and equipment. And further, that council authorize the reallocation of $40,000 identified in the furniture, fixtures, and equipment budget for the Terrace Lodge phone system to the construction budget allowance for a total combined project budget allowance of $554,473.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second, please. Counselor Purcell and seconded by Deputy Warden Marks. And who would like to speak to this? Brian, would you like to speak to this? Okay, go ahead.
I'd be happy to. Thank you, Madam Warden, through you to council. This report is presented at the request of Terrace Lodge Redevelopment Steering Committee and provides council with a summary of project changes and new expenditures, all contained within the existing overall project budget for review and approval. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Are there any questions or comments concerning this report? Counselor Jones, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Warden, three to Brian. I'm just a little concerned that something as significant as security and whatnot was was that an oversight in the original tender or process, or how did that happen? It just seems like that's something that's incorporated in every building that we're building now.
Through you, Madam Warden, to Counselor Jones. The original scope of work associated with that work was never included in D. Grant's scope of work and was originally anticipated to be administered by county staff. Through the course of in-depth discussion, it became quite clear quickly that county staff didn't have the capacity or the technical experience to be able to develop the required design such that we could procure the required contractor. And as you've noted, D. Grant certainly has tremendous experience in this regard, having worked on many homes in the past whereby this scope of work was included. And so the entire team felt it best to include this scope of work with D. Grant's overall project scope, again, based on their experience and guided by our architect as well.
Thank you.
I believe Deputy Warden Marks and then I think Counselor Mennel had us hand up. So we'll start with you, Deputy Warden Marks.
Just as a member of the committee, at our committee meeting, we had explanations, and I thought all the reasons given were logical and made sense. I think that was the consensus of the committee. I think Counselor Mennel summed it up that, you know, there's no additional money, we're just sort of redistributing it, so I'm quite satisfied with the report.
Okay, thank you. And Counselor Mennel, did you have further comments?
Well, Tom already stated that this is not a new ask of money, this is simply changing money from one pocket to another pocket, so it's just kind of, it's a housekeeping thing.
Any further questions or comments? Counselor Purcell.
Yeah, as Chair of the committee, I did ask that this report come to you. Basically, we probably could have kept going just because it is within budget, but we did tell county council because of the magnitude of the project and the interest in it that we would try to keep you up to date specifically as we redefine these types of items and we identified the reality versus what we had budgeted for on a global scale. So you will see some of these reports come forward in the future. The example being, we're starting to figure out exactly what we want to do with some of the decorating and some of the furniture, et cetera. The money is set aside, but we're not specific about it. And as we get more and more detail, we'll bring that forward to you, just so you're fully aware of what we're doing and how we're shuffling the money back and forth, just to acknowledge real activity that's going on. As Brian pointed out, the security system was in there, but we thought we could just let our own staff do it. But as you know, with all of the changes and all of the things that are going on, the practical, sensible, and most economic solution was to transfer that responsibility over to grant, and that's basically all we're doing. So I think Brian's done an excellent job of stepping in and having answers for all of the questions, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions, too, that folks may have on the members of county council.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Purcell. Are there any further questions or comments? Seeing... Oh, sorry, Sally, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I'm really glad for the explanation because I was very concerned with that this was an increase in the budget and a huge increase, so I'm really very pleased to understand that it is not an increase at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Martin. Are there any further questions or comments? Seeing none.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks?
Sorry, yes.
Counselor Mennel?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Madam Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
The next item up is Planning Services Bylaw Number 2201.
Be it resolved that the report titled Planning Services Bylaw Number 22-01, dated January 4, 2022, from the General Manager of Engineering Planning and Enterprise be received and filed, and that county council approve and authorize Bylaw Number 22-01, as included in the January 11, 2022 council agenda package.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Jones and Counselor Jagair. Brian, did you want to speak to this?
Through you, Madam Warden, to council. Amendment and repealing of Bylaw Number 2032 is required resulting from the Director of Engineering Services change in title to the General Manager of Engineering Planning Enterprise. Bylaw Number 2201 being considered included in the agenda package reflects a change in job title and ensures that the general manager is able to function as the backup delegated authority for certain planning matters. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Are there any questions for Brian? Seeing none.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Mennel?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Madam Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
The next item up is Metavi EMS Elgin, Ontario.
Be it resolved that the report titled Metavi Elgin, Metavi EMS Elgin, Ontario, Community Paramedicine Program, dated January 30, 2021, from the Chief Administrative Officer and the Manager of Emergency Management, be received and filed.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Counselor McPhail and Deputy Warden... Oh, go ahead, Counselor Martin. Well, I'm sorry, I can't see you, so yes, we'll accept you as the seconder this time. Did you want to...
Sorry, I just, I can't, if I turn my video on, it just, everything goes out. I'm sorry, it's even, I'm having problems even without the video.
Okay, I'll just try to keep in mind, Counselor Martin, next time. Sorry about that.
Thanks, Madam Warden. Through you to members of council, this report provides an overview of the Community Paramedicine Program, and there is a lot of community interest in this program, so it is important that council be aware of this exciting initiative and be provided with as many details as are available at this time. So the purpose of the Community Paramedicine for Long-Term Care Program is to keep individuals who are on the long-term care home wait list or those who are soon to be eligible for long-term care stabilized in their illness trajectory and in their own homes for as long as possible. This program will accomplish this through preventative and responsive care, such as home visits and remote patient monitoring. We submitted a proposal to the ministry in early December and received notification just yesterday that our proposal has been approved. The program is fully funded by the Ministry of Health, and we anticipate rolling out this program in Elgin and St. Thomas in the spring of 2022. With that, I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you, Julie. Are there any questions concerning this report?
Just a comment.
Go ahead, Counselor Martin.
I'm really excited about this. I know of a member here in Sparta who was very eager for it, and I think this will be a wonderful addition, and I'm very pleased that this is going ahead.
Thank you, Counselor Martin. Counselor Mennel, did you have your hand up?
A question to Julie is that, is there additional staff going to be hired for this or is this going to be done with the existing staff? Because I'm hearing existing staff is maxed out right now.
Through you, Madam Warden, to Counselor Mennel, you're exactly right that the Metavi EMS team is running pretty lean right now, as many healthcare sectors are. So this will involve recruitment of a dedicated community paramedicine team in order to operate 24/7. So I anticipate recruitment will take place in the coming weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any further questions? Counselor McPhail?
Yes, Madam Warden, just a question to Julie. Will these new hires be advanced paramedics or will they be just the general paramedic that we have on the road right now?
Through you, Madam Warden, to members of council. To be completely honest, I don't have that information at this time, as Metavi will do the recruitment and come up with the job posting, so I will circle back with council with more information on that. Great question.
Okay, thank you, Julie. Are there any further questions or comments? Seeing none.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Martin? Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Thank you. Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Mennel? Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Madam Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
The next item is Electronic Digital Signatures Policy 1.9.
Be it resolved that the report titled Electronic Digital Signatures Policy Number 1.9, dated January 4, 2022, from the Chief Administrative Officer be received and filed, and that Elgin County Council approve the Electronic Digital Signatures Policy Number 1.9 as presented.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Counselor Jagair and seconded by Counselor Mennel. And I'll turn it over to you, Julie.
Thanks, Madam Warden. Through you two, members of council, as we continue to streamline our internal and external business processes and improve how we deliver services to our community, we are replacing some paper-based processes with electronic practices that are modern, faster, and easier to use. The purpose of this policy is to ensure consistent, authorized, and lawful use of electronic signatures by guiding our business process to apply electronic signatures and providing guidance on when electronic signatures and signature stamps may be considered official and acceptable by the corporation. So it is recommended that council approve the policy as presented.
Okay, thank you, Julie. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Mennel?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Madam Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
The next item up is COVID-19 Vaccination Verification. See?
Be it resolved that the report titled COVID-19 Vaccine Verification Vaccination Verification Policy, dated January 4, 2022, from the Chief Administrative Officer be received and filed, and that Elgin County Council approve the amendments to Policy Number 8.390, COVID-19 Vaccination Verification Policy as presented.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Moved by Counselor Jones and seconded by Deputy Warden Marks. And I'll turn this back over to you, Julie.
Thanks, Madam Warden. Through you to members of council, in September, council approved a vaccine verification policy that includes a provision for unvaccinated staff or staff who fail to disclose their vaccination status, indicating that mandatory rapid testing is required three times per week with 48 hours between testing, as well as completion of an education program. These conditions are required to occur outside of working hours and at the expense of the employee. Employees who fail to comply with this policy, as previously approved by council, will be subject to progressive disciplinary action up to and including termination. To date, the county has been able to provide rapid antigen tests for employees who required testing under the policy. With the mass distribution of rapid antigen tests across the province, the county's ability to procure rapid antigen tests in bulk for non-healthcare staff is very limited. In the event the county is unable to provide rapid antigen tests, it is the responsibility of the employee, excluding those employees who are receiving an accommodation, to obtain rapid antigen tests at their own expense. So it is recommended that council consider an amendment to the policy to include the following provision. In the event that circumstances arrive in which rapid antigen tests cannot reasonably be obtained by an employee due to circumstances of limited availability of rapid antigen tests beyond the control of an employee that prevents the employee from satisfying the conditions set forth in the paragraph proceeding immediately above, the county may declare such test unavailability as an extraordinary circumstance. Upon the declaration of such extraordinary circumstance, the county may present the option of an unpaid, non-disciplinary leave to an affected employee. The declaration of extraordinary circumstance, including but not limited to the duration thereof, shall be at the sole, absolute, and unfettered discretion of the county. Upon termination of the declaration of extraordinary circumstance described herein, the option and/or ability of an employee to accept unpaid leave ends, and any and all affected employees will be required to fully comply with the within policy. There are also a number of other housekeeping changes noted within the report. So since the COVID-19 Vaccine Verification Policy was implemented, rapid antigen tests have been provided to those who have required them free of charge. And while we will continue to attempt to procure additional rapid antigen tests for non-healthcare staff, it is recommended that these changes be made to consider the current reality that rapid tests may not be readily available, either county-supplied or non-county-supplied. So the recommendations are that council receive and file and approve the policy amendments as presented.
Thank you, Julie. Are there any questions or comments concerning this report? Counselor Ketchba, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Through you to staff. Julie, has the, uh, any consideration been given to, uh, simply considering the, uh, changing the frequency of the testing, given the fact that the limiting factor is the availability of these tests? Rather than simply, uh, if the tests are no longer available at this point, then the employee must, uh, uh, you know what I mean, uh, take an unpaid leave?
One more time. So, uh, just to circle back, you cut out for a second there.
Oh.
Your, your question, Counselor Ketchapah, was about the frequency of testing?
For example, rather than three times a week, reduce it to two or maybe one.
Through you, Madam Warden. Uh, right now, we have one box of available rapid antigen tests, test kits, which is 25. Um, so I think regardless of the frequency of testing, we will still likely be faced with running out of tests entirely. But to answer your question very directly, we're still following the public health advice which was provided to us at the time of original, um, at the time we originally presented this to council in September, which was three times per week. So we have not, uh, reassessed or circled back with public health about changing frequency.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Counselor Ketchapah.
Yes, as a rebuttal to that, uh, public health has indicated that a minimum of once per week, but preferably two to three times per week. That's why I asked the question.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Ketchapah. Did you have a question?
They're in response, Madam Warden, to members of council. It is, uh, council policy, so we could certainly make that adjustment from three times per week to once a week, though I do note and caution council that the availability of rapid tests is, um, very, very limited at this time.
Madam Warden?
Go ahead, Counselor Martin.
Yeah, we adopted as central of this exact same policy last night at our council meeting, uh, and we're in the same building. So, just so you're aware, that our, our policy will look identical to the policy before you right now.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Martin. Are there any further questions or comments? Seeing none?
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Mennel?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchapah?
Yes.
Madam Warden?
Yes.
The motion is carried.
The next item up is COVID-19 Emergency Team Planning, December Update.
Be it resolved that the report titled COVID-19 Emergency Team Planning, December Update, dated January 4th, 2022 from the Chief Administrative Officer be received and filed.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second. Moved by Deputy Warden Marks and seconded by Counselor McPhail, and I'll turn it back over to you, Julie, please.
Thanks, Madam Warden. Through you to members of council, our operational emergency management team continues to work together to ensure that essential county services and our COVID-19 response are properly resourced. Uh, we work together to identify and manage resourcing and staffing issues, and we work to support county council, municipal partners, community, and stakeholders, and we support staff to be well through these challenging times. As we've done since March 2020, this report details and summarizes our ongoing response to COVID-19. Since the onset of the pandemic, but in particular over the last six or so weeks, these times have been particularly difficult in our healthcare settings, including Elgin's three long-term care homes. Um, our long-term care home team, uh, and their commitment to supporting our residents and each other has been exceptional and has been greatly appreciated by county administration, and I'm sure county council. This has been a really challenging time for all of our long-term care home staff, and I'm certainly very grateful for everyone's efforts. I'd like to express my sincerest appreciation to Michelle Harris, our Director of Homes and Senior Services, and the Homes Leadership Team, who sacrificed their holidays and a lot of their, um, their time and energy in making sure that our homes are as safe as they can be for our residents. I'd also like to thank Amy Thompson, Director of HR, and her HR team, who has been providing invaluable support through these challenging times. Jeff Van Roybroek for his emergency management expertise, and the Community and Cultural Services Team, who are willing to help out where and whenever needed. And so many others who have stepped up to support our long-term care home teams as we respond to the impact of COVID-19. We are incredibly fortunate at Elgin County to have such a dedicated and resilient team. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Julie. Are there any questions for Julie? Seeing none?
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor, uh, Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Mennel?
Yeah.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchapah?
Yes.
Madam Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
The next item up is council correspondence. Um, the first one, um, is from Counselor Grant Jones, Chair of the Environmental Advisory Committee.
It resolved that county council allocate $10,000 for the installation of a pollinator garden and native pollinator plants at county-owned facilities. Alternatively, that county council deny the request from the Environmental Committee for $10,000 for the installation of a pollinator garden and native pollinator plants at county-owned facilities. So we'll start with, um, that county council allocate $10,000 for pollinator gardens.
Okay, so we're, we're looking for a mover and a seconder?
I'm happy to move it.
Okay, moved by Counselor Martin and seconded by Counselor Jones. And who would like to speak to this to give more information? Counselor Jones, go ahead.
Thank you, uh, Madam Jerker, Madam Warden. Um, two deliberations at the Environmental Committee. It's, uh, this, uh, project that's near and dear to everybody on the committee's heart. Uh, I'd like to make a small presentation, uh, verbal. So I'll start here. Uh, we should really be referring to, uh, pollinator gardens as wildlife gardens. The term pollinator garden implies that native plant-based gardens only provide flowers and nectar to certain types of insects and pollinators. Most people assume pollinators are bees and butterflies, and this is not, uh, just about honeybees and monarchs. This, this is about, about 1,600 species of moths, butterflies, and in Ontario alone, there's 855 species of native bees, whom, uh, most depend on native plants for some part of their life cycle. The additional pollinators include honeybirds, flies, beetles, moths, and birds. But wildlife gardens provide habitat for much more, uh, richer diversity of life and just pollinators. Species diverse, species diversity and richness is the true goal here. Um, think of the food chain or what, plants are the first level, they harvest sunlight and CO2 to produce the energy that sustains all life on, on planet Earth. Here, every creature on this planet depends on native plants or, uh, either directly or indirect, indirectly. The increase in plant diversity is directly correlated with a increase in the diversity of other creatures and insects, birds, and mammals, while variety of plants, uh, offers food and habitat for those creatures. As I said, there's over 850 species of native bees in Canada, not all of whom are anxious to sting human beings. They include sweat bees, leaf-cutting bees, mining bees, and squash bees. Even those, uh, who do sting, it's only the females who can sting. And, uh, vast majority of bees in Canada are not easily provoked into stinging unless in self-defense. Here, go if you sit on one or get one caught in your clothing. In fact, uh, it is wasps and, and such as yellow jackets who are the most aggressive stingers, and most of those are attracted to human foods. As anyone who has had a picnic in a park at King and Test, uh, and in terms of preventing stings to humans, we should be, uh, we'd be better off banning picnics in parks and banning, uh, habitat gardens. Yeah, don't think that's ever going to happen. Um, many insects can't, uh, eat or breed using the typical ornamental gardens, plants that we have in our gardens today, houses that, uh, continues that, the sort of thing. They do not need these plants as food, or nor can they digest, uh, nor can they digest them. Plants have evolved very specifically, leaf chemistry, and over, over the millennia, and for this reason, the insects are very specific about which plants they use as habitats. Most insects, and most insects are specialists in this area. A plant that has fed nothing or has nothing to offer, these insects has not done its job. I guess that's why, uh, when we, we talk about, uh, pollinator garden, whether it's at the, the county building to the north side, or by this Terrace Lodge, or Bovier, or Elgin Manor. We're looking at changing how we look at gardens, and, uh, it's not an expensive, uh, undertaking when we look at, uh, terrace lives and redevelopment. We, we look at that huge, uh, interior garden space, and what an opportunity it is to make significant changes to our environment. And, uh, as well as, uh, when we look at some of the gardens of Bovier, Elgin, that a lot of the, uh, our residents, uh, take pride in and, and spend time nurturing, uh, pollinators, uh, you plant them, they're native species, they're drought-resistant. Um, once, uh, they, uh, take off, it usually takes about two to three years for them to really, uh, be at their peak of performance, uh, can be just as beautiful as any, uh, planted garden with, uh, the ornamentals that we have at our nurseries today. And I, I think, uh, it's also, uh, there are a lot less maintenance over the course of time. Once they're planted, uh, they're native, uh, they don't take a lot of maintenance of, for maybe, uh, taking some of the plants away, just to thin them out a bit from time to time, but, um, I think, uh, this is a great initiative. It doesn't cost the, the, when you look at the grand scheme of things, in a budget of over $60 million, uh, $10,000 to make a significant change to how we look at things in our life, but, uh, that's all this, uh, committee is, uh, really asking for. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Counselor Jones. Are there any questions? Uh, go ahead, Counselor Ketchapah.
Thank you. Uh, this is a question for staff. Uh, the grounds immediately to the south of the administrative building, are those tall prairie plantings in there?
Through you, Madam.
Anybody?
Um, perhaps Brian Lima has more information. I can't say for certain whether they're prairie.
Through you, Madam Warden, uh, in consultation with the conservation authority, that is our understanding, yes.
Okay, so you have a naturalized area of already a pollinator garden established at the county building?
Counselor Jones, go ahead.
Um, no, uh, there's a, there's a big difference between, uh, prairie tall grass and pollinator garden. Pollinator garden is very specific plants within that prairie tall grass that are separated out, and they're, uh, they're, they're a flowering plant. They aren't grass. Uh, this is specifically designed to be enhancing to the environment of the people around them. It's, uh, the flowers, um, some very beautiful flowers. And, uh, for me, I'm not much of a gardener, but I can, I've been very well versed in this over the last, uh, few months, and, um, this is a different concept in gardening, period. It's, uh, to enhance the environment of the people around it. It's, uh, you can't walk, it's difficult to walk through prairie tall grass. It's, uh, it's, uh, this is just gardening at its basics with, uh, the na, native plants that we have in our immediate area.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Jones. Um, Counselor Mennel, did you have your hand up first, or did Counselor Jagair? Sorry. Uh, go ahead, Counselor Mennel.
Okay, uh, I can support this. Over the last hundred years, that most farms used to be all fenced off in 10-acre parcels, and all the fence rows were full with, with milk leads and, and, uh, th, things that were, were enhancing the pollinators. Now, now, most, all those fence rows have been taken out, and so we've lost a lot of that habitat. And, uh, certainly, it's, it's very evident that if we don't look after the pollinators, they will not look after us. So I think this is a fine example that we can set for, for the county, not only for the county's, uh, property, but, uh, trickle down to the townships and into the individual, uh, ratepayers as well. So I, I'm willing to support this.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Mennel. Uh, Counselor Jagair, go ahead.
Thank, thank you, Ma, Madam Warden. Um, sorry, several points, because I, I feel strongly about this on both sides. The, the value of a, of a prairie and a pollinator garden is a moot point. It's obvious. And, um, you know, we have many examples. We have many agencies, many community, uh, environmental groups who are doing a lot of work across the county to, uh, improve. So all the points that have been made are valid, uh, save and accept the funding by the county. We have to stay in our lane. It is not our role to fund these, um, environmental projects. They, I realize that all of council has not been privy to the budget deliberations, although you can feel free to watch any of the videos anytime. But for, since the beginning of this council, we've been trying to be very diligent about needs versus wants. This is not a need, this is a want, and I've received correspondence even throughout the holidays after the initial discussions of the Budget Committee on this item, and there is a ton of support for pollinator gardens, but not funded through the, to the tune of $10,000, uh, when we are having to cut to the bone in many other areas. So I encourage, I would like to request that the Environmental Committee consult with other agencies. We have several, we can promote several, uh, programs that will help farmers create, uh, and, and be paid, uh, for pollinator gardens. We have other, like the Stewardship Council could, uh, potentially fund this. In other words, yes, for the concept, but no for, um, our budget being used for that. That's not in our lane.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Jagair. Go ahead. Um, sorry, did you have something, Counselor Martin?
Yes, I, I would just, this is on county property. This is your county committee, uh, the Environmental Committee that you've appointed to come up with things to improve county's impact on the environment. And I think Counselor Jones made an excellent presentation, and I disagree that this is not part of our mandate. It is part of our mandate. We said we were to improve, um, and make a healthier environment, and this is one way of doing it. So I believe it is very much in our mandate.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Martin. Uh, Counselor Jones, and then Counselor Jagair.
Yes, and I, you know, there, there are programs out there. Most of them are directed, like you said, to agricultural lands, and these are not agricultural lands we're talking about. I don't think a lot of these programs you're looking at are valid. Uh, when you're looking at gardens, uh, on county property, especially terrace lives, where it's going to be a new garden, and we're going to spend the money anyway, it seems to make sense that we do it the proper way and look at our natural environment as part of that project. Whether it's, uh, coming from the, uh, your, uh, subcommittee, uh, uh, raising funds for, uh, extras at the county, uh, at the county home, or when it comes from our budget here, I, I think it's imperative that we set the example and, uh, for, and $10,000 is just a number we threw out there. It could be much less than that. We wanted to put a placeholder in place because we haven't had the reports back from staff yet to exactly know how much it's going to cost, and it could be, very well be less. And, uh, you know, I, I strongly feel about this, and, uh, you know, uh, yeah, we've been cutting the budget to the bone, but there's a lot of areas where, you know, uh, $10,000, like I said, on a 60-plus million dollar budget, like, uh, just a drop in the bucket.
Go ahead, Counselor Jagair.
Uh, thank you, Madam Martin. So I disagree that, um, anything is a drop in the bucket. Um, just in principle, that's, that's not how I look at, at budgeting, and, uh, so if the committee could make, uh, a, a more precise proposal, is it $10,000 or is it not? I think, again, our ratepayers deserve, uh, more precise requests, and I would like the committee to also come up with proposals that, in fact, um, do not cost money, but could save money and, um, improve the impact on the environment. So I've, I've had constituents approach me about reviewing our, uh, mowing and spraying policies and, or not policies, but approaches, and perhaps we have already And perhaps we have already, there are other ways that the Environmental Committee and other practices that they could review before coming to council with a dollar request. And I also want to specify that some of the programs, yes, Alice, for example, is directed at agricultural land, but I know that I've personally accessed other programs for private landowners on non-agricultural land. And there are, there are agencies and there is funding available. So I would encourage, again, I do not disapprove of the idea at all. It's a great idea. The funding needs more work.
Thank you, Counselor Jagair. Go ahead, Counselor McPhail.
Yeah, and again, certainly, Arma and I have even tried to see if we can let more milkweeds survive on our property. And I think if everybody does a little bit, it certainly will benefit the pollinators. But my question is, I know that there's a dollar figure of $10,000, so needed to be in a placeholder, but there's not a whole lot of details past that into what exactly needs to be done. Where is it going to be placed on the property? And who is going to do this? Is this $10,000 to enhance volunteers to do this? Or is this $10,000 to hire some firm to come and look after this for us? So I mean, there's a number of questions that maybe just need to have a little bit more detail on it. So I don't know if the committee has got into that depth or not, or they're just simply asking for the $10,000 to be set aside.
Counselor Jones, I believe you had your hand up.
Yeah, it's, obviously COVID has really put a stress on staff, especially Brian's team and Julie's team. We are expecting a report back from Brian's team at our next meeting. We thought his council should know that we're looking at some money of the budget. Brian, seeing Brian's team's report, I really don't know the full depth of their investigation yet. It's just, basically, we're giving you a heads up that this is what we're thinking about. With regards to mowing and spraying, that has already been addressed. That was one of the first things we looked at as a committee back a year ago. Brian has taken that to heart and looked at that as part of going forward with our, what we're looking at on county roadsides, if Brian wants to add to that or not.
Brian, do you have any comment about that?
Through Madam Warden, further to Counselor Jones's comments, certainly, discussions have occurred with our local municipal partners with respect to roadside grass mowing, and so far as included amended changes to future road maintenance agreement as well. So changes and practices have been and were discussed as part of the road maintenance agreement review as well, so.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Go ahead, Deputy Warden Marks.
I think this is a great discussion. I certainly support Counselor Jagair's vigorous approach to the budget, though. I can appreciate Counselor Mennel's, I can remember taking fence rows out and, you know, I guess when he took those fence rows out, the thing I remember, there weren't a lot of people standing around. I don't like the location of this. I think nature and people need to be a bit separate. And I do a lot of walking along Ferguson Line, and over the last five, six years, I've noticed myself, like Counselor McPhail, started to cut around the plants for the monarchs, what's the name, my weed? But anyway, milkweed, yes. And actually, you know, it's multiplied, and walking up and down the road, I see so many spots where the neighbors are doing the same things, and I think taking pride because there's nothing more beautiful than watching a monarch butterfly flying around. But I think, again, like Counselor McPhail said, if we all do our part, this discussion's probably enabling us here, encouraging us to do it. I just, $10,000, you know, if it was $8,711.43, I think there's, we're premature in this. No, I encourage it, but this discussion's been very beneficial. I hope the public's listening to it. But I appreciate Counselor Jagair's vigorous approach to our budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Warden Marks. Are there any further questions or comments?
One comment, Mayor-
Go ahead. Go ahead, Counselor Martin.
The funding, the public funding will not fund things on municipally-owned land. So there will be no funding applications anywhere that I am aware of for municipally-owned land from local groups that are doing funding. They are strictly on private property. I think that setting an example, that we are, it's very important that we say, I'm delighted to hear that Counselor McPhail et cetera, that they're encouraging milkweed. This is far more than milkweed, and it is not a dangerous area at all. And we'd be happy to come back with exact details. We just wanted you to know, as Counselor Jones said, we wanted to put a placeholder in there so that you knew that this is something we are seriously considering. And we would like, our meeting is coming up later this week, but we felt we should at least ask now so that you know that that's something we would like in the budget.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Martin. Go ahead, Counselor Purcell.
I'd be happy to move that this correspondence be deferred until the committee brings back a more comprehensive report.
Just before we go there, Counselor Purcell, I believe Counselor Jagair had her hand up. So go ahead, Counselor Jagair.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I just would like the information to make sure that we're not providing misinformation that in terms of funding and what's eligible. For example, I do not believe that the county fully paid for the prairie installation, which is on county land. I think there was funding through the Conservation Authority and perhaps other agencies. So I just want to make sure that we have the correct information out there, and perhaps that's something the Environmental Committee could investigate further before making that statement.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Jagair. Are there any further questions or comments? So Counselor Purcell has suggested, sorry, Counselor McPhail. Sorry, it's your hand there.
I would, I would support Counselor Purcell's amendment.
Okay.
Because we have a mover and second, or we have to run through the first resolution first?
Okay, so we will run through the first resolution first and go through that. And we all know what we're voting on, if you remember. Do you need Julie to reread what's on the floor right now?
Yes.
Yes, please.
The motion on the floor is be it resolved that county council allocate $10,000 for the installation of a pollinator garden and native pollinator plants at county-owned facilities.
Okay, so now we'll do the vote. There's no further questions or comments. Okay?
Counselor McPhail?
No.
Counselor Purcell?
No.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks?
No.
Counselor Mennel?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
No.
Counselor Ketchabah?
No.
And Madam Warden?
No.
Six, three, no, sorry, three, six, the motion is defeated.
So now we'll get to what Counselor has moved. If you could read his resolution.
So be it resolved that staff be directed to send correspondence to the Environmental Committee suggesting that additional information with respect to the installation of a pollinator garden and native pollinator plants at county-owned facilities be provided to county council at a future meeting.
Okay, are there any questions or comments with this? Counselor McPhail.
I'd just like to add in there that who was going to do this work?
Yes.
Okay.
Through you, Madam Warden. There were a number of outstanding items that I think the committee needs to address. So we have made notes of the specific information that county councilors would like to see and will work with the committee to make sure that that's included in any follow-up information. Will that suffice?
Is everyone okay with that? Okay, with no further comments, then we'll vote.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Mennel?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
No.
And Counselor Ketchabah?
Yes.
And Madam Warden?
Yes.
Eight, one, the motion is carried.
Okay, thank you. The next item up is from the municipality of Dutton Dunwich.
Be it resolved that staff be directed to determine the costs and feasibility associated with the construction and turning lane at the intersection of Pioneer Line and Curry Road to Street A of the Dutton Land Holdings Development and report back to council at a later date.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second? Counselor Purcell and Counselor Ketchapaw? And Counselor Purcell, did you have anything further to add to this?
Yes, our letter was more intended to go to the Roads Department than to full county council at this stage, but it's not bad that it comes here. We viewed it as, as you know, we have extraordinary development going on down here, but more importantly, this particular section of road is part of an EDA and, or need EDR. And we also have some basic needs with it to be updated a little bit. But this is just one of those items, no different than when we're looking at putting roundabouts in at one time or another at other communities, or we're looking at fixing a bridge at some time in the future. We know that this is coming. Brian was good enough to come down, and he's trying to help us work with some new development in the area. But more importantly, he identified that this road's going to have to have some improvements at some time in the future. So all we would like to do is, the motion says, just refer it to his department, and in due course, it will run its course, and in due course, we will figure out the proper allocations of funding and some timelines and some costs. But you have to start somewhere, so we would like to get started on it. But I don't think it belongs in the hands of county council at this time. It's part of ongoing road maintenance or look into the future to make sure our road systems work properly for us. I hope that clarifies things.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Purcell. Are there any questions or comments from council? Okay, seeing none?
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Mennel?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah?
Yes.
Warden French?
Yes.
Nine, zero, the motion is carried.
There are no items for the consent agenda, and we'll move into other business. Are there any statements or inquiries by members? Okay, seeing none. Notice of motion? Are there any matters of urgency? Okay, we'll be moving into closed meeting.
Be it resolved that we do now proceed into closed meeting session in accordance with the Municipal Act to discuss the following matters under the Municipal Act, Section 239-2, including closed session item number one, respect to procurement, and closed session item number two, which is an organizational update.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second? Counselor Ketchapaw and Counselor Manell. Any questions, comments? Seeing none?
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Mennel?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah?
Yes.
And Madam Warden?
Yes.
Nine, zero, the motion is carried.
Okay, welcome back, everyone. Motion to rise and report, please.
Be it resolved that we do now rise and report.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second? Deputy Warden Marks and Mayor, sorry, and Counselor Mennel? I'm sure there's no questions or comments. Please.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Mennel?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah?
Yes.
And Madam Warden?
Yes.
Nine, zero, the motion is carried.
Okay, the next item is in-camera item number one, procurement.
Be it resolved that staff proceed as directed.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second? Counselor Jones and seconded by Counselor McPhail? Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none?
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Mennel?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah?
Yes.
Madam Warden?
Yes.
Nine, zero, the motion is carried.
The next item is in-camera item number two, organizational update.
Be it resolved that staff proceed as directed.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second? Counselor Purcell and Counselor Ketchapaw? Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none?
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Mennel?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah?
Yes.
And Madam Warden?
Yes.
Nine, zero, the motion is carried.
The next item is motion to adopt recommendations from the Committee of the Whole?
Be it resolved that we do now adopt recommendations from Committee of the Whole.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second? Counselor Jagair and Deputy Warden Marks, questions or comments? Seeing none?
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Mennel?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah?
Yes.
Madam Warden?
Yes.
Nine, zero, the motion is carried.
The next item up is consideration of bylaws.
Be it a first, second, and third read of bylaw 22-01, being a bylaw to delegate certain authorities vested in the council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin as the approval authority with respect to plans of subdivision, plans of condominium, and part lot control bylaws pursuant to Section 22 and 51 of the Planning Act, the manager of planning for the County of Elgin, and to repeal bylaw number 20-32.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second? Counselor Jones and Counselor Mennel, questions or comments? Seeing none?
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Mennel?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah?
Yes.
Madam Warden?
Yes.
Nine, zero, the motion is carried.
The next item is bylaw number 22-02.
Be it resolved that bylaw, be it a first, second, and third read of bylaw 22-02, being a bylaw to repeal bylaw number 18-26, as a bylaw to remove and prohibit the right of passage over a portion of the Lewis Street Road allowance, which is south of the traveled portion of Rush Creek Line in the township of Malahide in the County of Elgin.
Someone to move and someone to second? Counselor Mennel and Counselor Jagair, questions or comments? Seeing none?
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Mennel?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchabah?
Yes.
And Warden French?
Yes.
Nine, zero, the motion is carried.
The next item is a bylaw number 22-03, and is there a change with that one?
There is a change. We'll just ask the county solicitor to speak to that change.
Okay, welcome, Steve.
Welcome, Madam Warden. With respect to the draft bylaw, it is, the purpose of the bylaw is to reverse-
With respect to the draft bylaw, it is, the purpose of the bylaw is to reverse the assumption of road allowances in Port Bruce in relation to the bridge replacement works, in an effort to ensure that we are using exactly the same wording and sketches. We use the sketch in Schedule B directly from the assumption bylaw. Unfortunately, in preparing the bylaw, neglected to, to revise the wording at the end of Schedule B. With respect to that, to that error, I'm asking that the bylaw being considered on Schedule B, that the word "assume" at the bottom of the page be deleted and replaced with the words "removed from Elgin Highway System." So the entire phrase at the bottom of Schedule B is highways to be removed from Elgin Highway System depicted as highlighted.
Thank you, Steve.
Be it a first, second, and third read of bylaw 22-03, being a bylaw to repeal bylaw number 1822, as a bylaw to add highways, including lower-tier highways, to the highway system for the Corporation of the County of Elgin.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second? Counselor Purcell and Counselor McPhail? Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none?
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Martin? Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Mendel?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Madam Warden?
Yes.
Nine, zero, the motion is carried.
The next bylaw is number 22-04, authorized speed limits.
Be it a first, second, and third read of bylaw 22-04, being a bylaw to amend the schedule to bylaw number 20-58, being a bylaw to authorize speed limits.
Okay, someone to move and someone to second? Counselor Jones? And someone to second? Counselor Mendel? Any questions or comments? Go ahead.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Mendel?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Madam Warden?
Yes.
Nine, zero, the motion is carried.
The next bylaw is number 22-05, Regulation of Traffic.
Be it a first, second, and third read of bylaw 22-05, being a bylaw to amend the schedule to bylaw number 20-05, being a consolidated bylaw for the regulation of traffic, including parking on county roads.
Someone to move and someone to second? Counselor Jagair and seconded by Counselor Martin? Questions or comments? Seeing none?
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Purcell?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
Deputy Warden Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Mendel?
Yes.
Counselor Jagair?
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba?
Yes.
Madam Warden?
Yes.
Nine, zero, the motion is carried.
And the next bylaw is number 22-06, Confirming All Actions and Proceedings.
Be it a first, second, and third read of bylaw 22-06, being a bylaw to confirm proceedings of the Municipal Council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin at the January 11th, 2022 meeting.
Someone to move and someone to second? Counselor Ketchba and seconded by Deputy Warden Marks? Questions or comments?
Counselor McPhail?